Six thirty? Yeah. Yeah, just one more mile. Oh, yeah, yeah. And the reflection, you know where they're at. Sixteen thirty-eight longer. The yard with my lawn guy ain't cutting it. He cuts it on Monday or Tuesday. I said, man, cut it, cut it weekend. I'm on. 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 All right. So I won't forget something new. But I don't notice it. It was clean. I just brought it in case my nose ran. Yeah, I know. I haven't prepared them yet.
You should not decide we were not going to bring that up.
Do you want mine? I have them. I just, with all this budget, I did every one of those measures. Every one of them, so.
You need a gold star and more for that.
Yeah, thanks, uh-huh. Plus dealt.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to talk about that one today. I think this is the only other one. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. But at least you don't have a. I hate the mayor's. Well, P G L. I, I. I. No. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all leaving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that. I eat it all. It's nice to be able to see people's faces, isn't it? I was just thinking about Bob. I was thinking, oh, that's what he made me. Y'all giving us some good snacks. Thank you. My gosh. I like all of it. I eat the milk done. I got that.
come along with that direction and help us to actually operationalize what they have required us to do. So I'll ask if any of the other committee members have comments or questions they want to raise at this point? Do I hear any concern, question, or objection about including any of these, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 legislative priorities in our program at this time? Everybody's okay?
I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Well, a couple of bullets on here. All of it is where we see, I think, creating a college debt forgiveness program for teachers and administrators, I think, that serve in underperforming districts to address the teacher shortage. You know, I'm hoping, I'm a believer in possibly we may have to forgive some debt. And I know across the country, and that's been an issue that we've been talking about. And I think, I think we may be able to get some traction on that, given, given the legislature, the, right now, the General Assembly, it is right now.
Right.
We probably may get some traction on that. But probably, on the other side of the House, I don't, I think that's going to be one that's, we may have to arm wrestle. But I think it's good to include it in there to make it part of
Sure.
our package.
Okay. Yeah, that really, the only question I had is, what is the school board's thinking at this point in terms of the use of underperforming? Because I think our, our school system has been performing pretty well, both in terms of our graduation rate, our accreditation rate, and so forth. So I just wondered, Dr. Jamison, if you could give us a little insight into what the thinking was behind the underperforming. And I think you're muted. Yeah.
That's probably a good, that's a good catch, I think. And Merrily, I apologize, I couldn't catch all of your comments. So if I don't capture, if I don't address that, I'm sorry. Probably that needs to be changed to, you know, that's a tough one. Underperforming came from a more broad lobbying, some of the research we were doing. That's, that's something that, that's come from some other districts. I think probably what that has to do more with is, the reason I'm struggling with the language is because I think we're going to try to move away from calling ourselves an urban district, because it is carrying with it some freight that I don't think it accurately reflects who we are. That's, so I think, I think you're right. We could work on that language there. Because I don't think we are underperforming, but we do have challenges.
Right.
To your question about where are we, we have challenges in recruiting and retaining, drawing teachers to this region.
Yeah. So maybe we can come up with a little bit different way of putting that idea across.
Yeah, I'll highlight that, and I'll go to work on that.
Yeah.
I agree. You know, we had, Mr. Chairman, we had a discussion back some years ago about using the word urban, because it denotes something. In fact, okay, you're a little bit behind, or you got issues, or you're not performing, almost not performing to a certain degree. So I, I agree with that. I think that's a, you know, the underperforming piece may be something we need to drill on, because most of our legislators that will be in here come from school districts that are performing pretty well.
Right. And is ours. And I mean, I just compare that to the, the one above it, providing capital funding to improve slash retrofit school facilities to assure equity needs for all students. We're kind of saying that's across the board. Because of the stewardship of the school board and the support that city council has given over the years, our school facilities are in relatively good shape compared to a lot of other localities. But we still have areas of improvement that we need to focus on, and certainly additional support from the state in terms of capital funding would help us to get where we need to be a lot quicker. So I like the idea that you left that broadly, that all school divisions need that kind of capital funding support, not just some. Anything else on the education piece? Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Yeah, Dr. Jamison, one of the things that I don't see here is, is this four semester rule for EL students. So that way that they would not count, those students that drop out will not count, their dropout rate will not count against our general graduation rate.
So is that something that the school board can take under consideration and decide if that's something that you want to add in or in some way, if you'd look at that for us?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. I'm typing a note right now, and I'll bring it back for discussion. We may have a new legislative committee after July 1. So we'll definitely, and thank you for reminding us of that. That's an important issue. You're absolutely right.
Great.
I think you well know.
Great. Okay. Well, if that's, if we're essentially in agreement with the, with the intent here, I think we can go on to the next section and invite Dr. Jamison to stay with us as long as she would like. But understand if you have other things that you need to be attending to. So if you could.
Thank you. I have an equity task force meeting in about a half an hour. So I'll stay for a few minutes, but then I'll go.
I'm never going to get in the way of anybody working on equity, that's for sure. So thank you. So if we could move to the, the one that says, City of Roanoke Legislative Committee, possible request for 2022 General Assembly at the top. This is essentially based on the feedback we got at the end of the session from our legislative liaisons at Advanced Strategies. And I'm sure everyone remembers when we had them participating in one of our meetings by Zoom. I sent this document to Senator Edwards' office and also to Delegate Rasul to see what they might be willing to consider. I got a very positive response back from Mr. Pretty in Senator Edwards' office. He would like to get some specific recommendations on language that could be used. And the city manager, I think, is working with staff to come up with some of those things. But I think these are all issues that are familiar to us. And of course, the fifth one is one that Senator Edwards has introduced legislation in the past. Mr. Pretty did let me know that he thinks that there may not be any limits set on the number of bills that legislators can introduce this time around. He's, he's trying to confirm that. But in the past couple of years, you know, they've, they've restricted how many bills each member can introduce, which has made it difficult for some of these things to get, to get any attention at all. So again, because these are things that we have been working on, unless there's any question, concern, or objection, I think we can just move forward with these. Ms. Whiteboy?
Yeah, the only question I had, Mr. Chair, was about the plastic bag tax. Do we have to ask for an amendment? Because it sounded like we were the only one that had done something with that ordinance thus far, and we haven't gotten any guidelines or anything. So is that a different, is that a different conversation?
Yeah, I don't think we need to, to ask anything from legislation at this point. The only, well, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Cow weigh on this as well. But my understanding is that if we get the guidance that we need from the Department of Taxation.
It's, that's where it comes on the top of the tax section. We don't have to have any amendments or anything like that.
No, and that request has already been made from the city attorney's office of the department to go ahead and process the, what is necessary. Because if you recall, part of that was dependent on the city actually taking the action, which you all did so. So there shouldn't be any action after that unless, well, there shouldn't be, because all of that will deal with mechanics, not with the legislation.
Okay. Okay. I was just wondering when we would hear something else about the guidelines.
Well, I would say then that the only possibility for an amendment would be to delay the effective date in the event that we don't get
We don't get it.
the guidance and regulations from the Department of Taxation as soon as possible. And, and there was some confusion. I don't know, Mr. Collins, if you can help us or not. But is it, in fact, are we in fact, the only locality in Virginia that has adopted this so far? I thought maybe a couple of Northern Virginia localities were also considering it.
To Mount Nollis, Chairman, we are. The Northern Virginia localities are in the process of doing it.
Okay.
But I'm not aware that they have actually passed any ordinances that would enable the plastic bag tax.
Right.
We, after council took action on the ordinance a month or so ago, we have submitted the ordinance to the Department of Taxation. And in my letter to the Department of Taxation, I indicated that we were awaiting, you know, further guidance for them to issue us. Our ordinance will go into effect, as you'll recall, on January 1, 2022. And hopefully, we will have that guidance from the Department of Taxation well before then.
Right. Well, if you and Mr. Spencer could sort of keep an eye out on, on what other localities may be doing and let us know as you learn of anything else that, you know, they are actually adopting in some other jurisdiction, that would be helpful to us as well, I think. Just sort of stay up to, you know, up to date on that.
Yes, sir. We sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Jeffrey?
Mr. Chairman, I thought regarding the plastic bag tax, I thought we was going to receive those guidelines when we was having this discussion. I thought it was going to receive around September, October.
Yeah, I think that was, that was still the indication that we had received, that that was the earliest that we would receive that. And I would say, if we have not, to Mr. Beskitch's point, if those dates come and we have not received that, and it doesn't look like we're going to, then we may need to reconsider the effective date.
Okay.
But that, right now, we're still working under that assumption.
Okay. Yeah, we, we've kind of found over the years that folks in Richmond don't always send us everything that we expect in a timely manner. So we just sort of have to prepare ourselves for those eventualities. Okay.
And Chairman, if I may, after council took action on the plastic bag ordinance, we received inquiries from many other localities and organizations regarding the tax and commended us on our being the first to take action on this.
Okay. So there, it sounds like there may be some folks wanting to jump on our bandwagon, which is probably okay with us, right?
Yes, sir. I actually received several requests to have a copy of the adopted ordinance sent to them.
Well, thank you.
So we're the, we're the test, we're the test tube?
No, no, no. We're the vanguard, Mr. Jeffery.
Oh, vanguard. Okay, that's a great word. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's make sure we.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we, yeah, okay.
So then what I'd like to do then is recognize Mr. Cobb to talk to us about this legislative proposal from Compress and Shock Foundation, and then open it up to everybody else for any other items that you would like for us to discuss and consider. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Beskitch. I believe all of you have a copy either through email or as part of this packet. I won't read all this to you, but just wanted to express my appreciation to Dr. Jack Perkins with the Compress and Shock Foundation for not only providing information about their organization, but also background on the importance of AED availability and distribution, and what I think is a really innovative approach to this. On the back page, you'll see the basic outline of the legislative proposal, which would be a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for AEDs to be placed in new vehicles. This would go to the citizens. New and used vehicle purchasers would be offered a tax credit for the following year if they choose to pay for an AED at the time of the vehicle purchase. There would be a cap that, that is on a first-come, first-served basis, and the AED cost would be roughly 40% cheaper than currently available. They, through their community efforts, they've, they certainly continue to raise awareness about how having easier and more readily available access to AEDs does help save lives. And that information is on the front. So I know that this delegate, Hurst, has expressed interest in, in possibly carrying this forward. And I know that we typically reach out to him as, you know, included in our larger scope of delegates and senators. But we can continue to, I'd just like to bring this before you as something that I think we could champion on a local level and perhaps be another leader in the state in putting something forward that not only benefit our local citizens, but save a lot of lives.
Well, I did want to get a couple of clarifications before opening up for other discussion. And you, you have already clarified one, and that is that Delegate Hurst may be willing to carry this legislation. It would certainly be helpful to know whether Dr. Perkins has contacted any other legislators or any other localities, asking them to also, you know, we've tried to focus much of our legislative package over the years on issues that are specific to Roanoke. Obviously, this is statewide, and we seem to have the most success with those when, when this kind of proposal comes from multiple jurisdictions, preferably in multiple different sectors of the state, and not just from one, one region. So I think that since you have the contact, if you could sort of stay in touch with Dr. Perkins and sort of find out.
I do know that they have reached out to numerous other legislators, including Senator Edwards and Delegate Rasul. I know that they've reached out to a legislator in Northern Virginia who actually sponsored an AED bill related to firing EMS that passed the General Assembly, if not this last year, the year before. So there is some, there's increasing interest in this on a statewide level. And again, as you look at the, the data here, it's not just statewide data, but some of it's Roanoke-specific data.
Sure. Yeah.
But I, but I will, I will continue to encourage that, because as we learned last year, with the limited number of bills that legislators can put forward, they're having to be very selective about what they can do.
Well, yeah, they may or may not have those limits this time, but I think it is good for us to keep tabs on, on what's going on with other localities and other legislators. And I just wanted to make sure also that I understood the third bullet point here. There would be a cap that is on a first-come, first-served basis. Does that, does that mean that they would set a certain amount that's available for these tax credits? And when enough people have exhausted the fund?
That's my understanding, but I can clarify that.
Then the next person that, that applies for the tax credit would not receive it?
I need to clarify that.
Yeah, if you could. That'd be great. Ms. Sanchez-Jones, yes?
I have a question about the bill, but as to how many year are trained in AED?
I took the training.
Yeah, I, I've actually had the privilege of saving someone's life on one occasion.
The AED training?
The AED, that Compress and Shock, yeah.
Well, not with AED. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have missed it. With CPR, I was AED.
So is that, is that what you're asking, CPR or AED?
AED. Yeah, I took the AED when they offered it to Compress and Shock. Yes. And I brought my entire sorority, but I had my sorority.
But you were the only council member?
Yeah, I've done CPR.
I didn't know any about any training going on.
Well, he came and spoke to us, and a bunch of us took it, yeah.
He came to council?
He came to council, yeah.
The city offered it. You took it. I took it under the city.
Yeah, he came, it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, one is up here on four.
All right. Well, let's, let's try to get back to the legislative, if we could.
What I think, I think that would be helpful information in, in the data, is to find out how many people have been trained to date. Because I know that they've been at this for about five years, and they continue to roll out and raise awareness. So I can get that information.
Good point. Yeah, let's, let's look at that as well.
And I just want to comment on a couple of bullets to just jump out. African Americans have a 97% higher risk of sudden cardiac arrest compared to whites. And males are 34% more likely to receive bystander AED usage compared to females. So.
The only thing that I was mayor blacked out on, I'll go over here, please.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to ask Mr. Cobb, the only thing that, that people brought up in the class that we were taking was the liability. Have they addressed that? Because a lot of people are afraid, you know, or reluctant to, to jump in because of, they're afraid of the risk and the liability associated with that. And I don't know if that's a part of their um.
In terms of administering the AED?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Well, the General Assembly has passed legislation in the past, which is basically good Samaritan legislation.
Right.
As long as there's no malicious intent, you know, in any sort of an accident situation or a medical emergency, that if you're, if you're trying to help.
With good intentions.
Yeah, you're not going to be held liable.
With, with electrical shocks and stuff?
Yeah. Well, for, for anything.
And I will say, this is not, you know, the, the onus is not all on the, the person trying to save the life. You know, one of the, the basic steps as part of the training is you, you make the initial observation, you call 911, and then you continue with the process.
Right, right.
So, so that, that extra layer of, of response is on their way.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's a big responsibility.
So does any member of the committee have other items that you would like to raise at this point? Seeing none, I will draft this up in the format that we've been using for the last few years, again, with Mr. Cow's assistance of getting some specific language on these first four items. And I think I mentioned that Mr. Pretty in Senator Edwards' office did say that the senator wanted information on the first four. Of course, the fifth one is one he's already interested in, but he, he may be willing to support these. I didn't mention that I have not yet received a response from Delegate Rasul. I thought that maybe he was still in recovery mode after his campaign for the lieutenant governor nomination. But the reason why I wanted to have this meeting today and not two weeks ago is because I wanted to see how the primary turned out, and whether he was still going to be our delegate. And it appears now that he will be. So I will follow up with him on all these items. And we don't need to finalize our program at this time, but I did want to sort of get ahead of the curve and get this in front of some of the legislators earlier in the year than we have in the past. So we probably, I would say we probably should plan on meeting again in two months. Well, maybe, maybe even September. Maybe we can just put our next meeting until September, the first, first council meeting in September. And then, of course, if, in the meantime, anybody comes up with something that you think we should discuss and consider for inclusion in our program for 2022, you know, always free to contact me, and, and we'll put that on the agenda for September. But I think we can sort of give ourselves a summer off. We've, actually, typically, we haven't really started meeting until August, September timeframe. So we are ahead of schedule. And I think we can hold off until September.
Mr. Chair, do you intend to have a legislative committee meeting with the delegates?
Yes.
So when do you want to schedule that?
Uh, let me talk with their offices and see what would work for them. I mean, we're talking probably November, December timeframe for that.
Okay.
But let me talk with their offices and see. That's a good, thank you for reminding me about that.
I'm sorry.
No, yes, sir.
I just got a question on, I don't know, five. Where does the senator feel where the General Assembly is going with that as it relates to limitation on mandatory minimum punishment, parole statutes and whatever? Where, where are we going on that? I know he talks to me often about wanting to bring parole back. And I think you're going to see a lot of issues this week, that were, this session, on parole. You're going to see a lot of that discussion, I think, lots going on. And I guess I want to feel, if he, does he want us to, to make the proposal? And I just want, I guess I can talk to him to get an idea of what he wants to do on this.
That, that probably makes the most sense, since you're certainly more familiar with the operations of the parole board than the rest of us. And, and he's, you know, he's definitely interested. I'm not sure how far he wants to go. But my understanding was that the bill that he introduced, Senate Bill 1443 in 2021, was basically to say that there's still guidelines on sentencing, but there are no mandatory minimums anymore. I think that's what he was trying to accomplish anyway. At least restrict that to only a few offenses where there would be any mandatory minimum, and, and leave it up to the discretion of the courts to decide what appropriate sentence would be.
What, what I would do, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I will get with him.
Please.
To get some clarification.
Yeah, please. I think that makes good sense. And, and you can, you can let us know.
Okay.
And even before our next meeting, if you have a chance to talk with him, where you see that.
All right.
So if there is no other business that anyone has, our committee meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now proceed into the conference room for Ms. Device Mayor's co-chair.